Good evening. Call to order, the City of Mason Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, March 10th, 2015. Could we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Barna?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
Present.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner Hagel?
Here.
Commissioner Hude?
Here.
Chair Person Reeser?
Here.
Vice Chair Sabatin?
Here.
Commissioner Scott?
Here.
And Secretary Waxman?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Part three on our agenda is approval of the minutes from our February 10th meeting. Any changes, corrections, or additions to the minutes?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Sabatin.
In the meeting minutes, I was present and Commissioner Scott was absent.
I'll make that correction.
Thank you. Anything else that we need to add or change to the minutes? If not, I will accept a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of February 10th, 2015, as amended.
We move in second it to approve the minutes as presented with the adjustment of the roll call. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, no. That motion carries. At this point in the meeting, it's an opportunity for people from the public to present any topic related to the planning commission. You'd have three minutes to discuss any topic that you have related to us. Having nobody out there, we will move right along. Commissioners, any announcements?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Just a couple of things. First of all, I'd like to thank the Mayor Pro Tem for his leadership in organizing our 150th anniversary of the incorporation of Mason, which went off very well yesterday. We had a lot of dignitaries here. It was a packed house. We had an interesting cake, which was in the shape of the cannon at the courthouse. It was, I thought, a tremendous event to be had by all. So I thank the Mayor Pro Tem for his leadership on that as the chair of that committee. It was a lot of fun for everyone, I think. Secondly, and this is kind of a personal shameless plug, Councilmember Drosha and I are starting a business called My Crowdsource, which is a crowdfunding business, and we are looking to get some funding for it. And the way we're doing that is through a local pitch contest called The Hatching. And if anyone wishes to vote for our idea, you go to thehatching.org/vote and vote for My Crowdsource. The top five vote-getters get to pitch at the end of the month, and the deadline to vote is March 20th. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Waxman. Congratulations on your startup. And Mayor Pro Tem Brown, I had also heard kudos on last night's event, and unfortunately I wasn't able to be there because of work, but from what I understand, a round of applause is in order, so. Commissioners, if you'll join me. Makes us look forward to the Fourth of July.
Certainly.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other announcements?
Mr. Commissioner.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
I just want to say thank you to everyone for the kudos, but it really goes to the committee and all of those that did a lot of hard work in helping everything to go off so smoothly. So I just have the fortune of chairing the group, but I'll certainly pass along those very kind sentiments, and I certainly take them to heart as well. Thank you.
All right, having no other announcements, at this point in our meeting, we have a presentation. Harmony, I'm sorry, Harmony, I always mess that up. Forgive me, please.
Gamazel.
Gamazel, that's it. I always get, I keep thinking that G is supposed to be silent. I'm sorry. Every time you've come to visit us, I keep messing that up. I'm very sorry.
No, it's okay.
Next time, I'll practice.
Okay.
Anyways, you have a presentation for us tonight, and if you could just give yourself a little bit of an introduction, many of our members are new since the last time that you were in and presented with us. So if you could just give us, like I say, a little introduction, background, and tell us a little bit about what Tri-County does as well, please.
Sure. My name's Harmony Gamazel. I'm a senior land use planner for the Tri-County Regional Planning Commission in Lansing. We serve the three-county area, almost half a million people, about 50 governments that hold their own local planning and zoning power, and we help them through long-range transportation planning, through short-term transportation funding projects. We help them with their groundwater and surface water protection efforts. We also have an economic development planner who helps write the comprehensive economic development strategy for the region. And then there's the land use program, which I head up, which has everything to do with sustainable land use policy and coming up with new tools for governments to use in the name of sustainability and in the name of following our 2005 regional growth policy that we adopted back then, and all of the goals and objectives within that that have to do with sustainability, which in essence is a balance of economic growth, community building, and environmental protection. So if your land use policies encompass those three things and balance those three things, then that will be a sustainable community that you live in. And so part of my work, all of my work, is to promote policies that are in the name of that. And so today, I'm here to let you know about a brand-new mapping tool we have called a Health Impact Assessment Mapper. And I'm going to go straight to the mid-MichiganSustainability.org website. We have a lot of tools on there. Feel free to click on Sustainability Tools, and down the left-hand side, you'll see we have Green Home Surveys, we have Health Practices Surveys, we have a Sustainability Audit Tool. What I'm going to focus in on is the Mid-Michigan Health Impact Assessment Tool, because that, I believe, is most useful to Mason while you're doing site plan reviews. So here is the Health Impact Assessment Tool Mapper. And as you can see, it's a map of the three-county region. And what you can do here is zoom in to the location you are assessing, you know, a parcel, if it's a site plan review that you're completing. And I'll show you how to zoom in in a minute. But just as an overview of the screen, you can see there's a login，请out. And so you, anyone, not just David, you all would be able to create your own account, pull up many, many data layers that have to do with a parcel, and do your own assessment, your own questioning, and come up with ideas for the site plan review. And save that report, because it can create maps for you and create reports on health data for you concerning that parcel. So you would create a login account to be able to save and print. First thing to do is, we're going to identify a parcel. Oh, no, sorry, sorry, sorry. Not it, not it. I need to take you over here to the right-hand side where we have the instructions. And we've tried to make this really user-friendly. This mapping tool has gone through a few different versions, and we've tried more and more to make it simple to use for everyone. You don't have to have training in GIS. You don't have to be a professional planner even. But over here, the steps are, again, you create your user account, use the address search here to find a particular address. Commissioner Reeser, should we use your home address? What address do we volunteer here to be our guinea pig tonight?
City Hall.
City Hall? What's the address?
201 West Dash Street.
Hopefully it'll find it. Zooming in. Very quick. You have good internet connection here. So you can see all of the parcels, it zoomed right in. I'm assuming 201 is where we are? No, no, no. Yeah, 201. More of those? So as a planner, I like to start with the address search, because I want to go right to where I am assessing a parcel. And the next thing I like to do is go right to the tab over here that says Data Layers. And this is a very long list of data layers that you can click on. Right now, we have Political Boundaries turned on. If I were to zoom out a little. Well, that's not really going to help, but we'll stay zoomed in, because we are downtown. I'm going to turn on Infrastructure. And there you can see it turned on the parks, libraries, fire stations, wells, hospitals, emergency response. Our schools are all there. And turn on Store Locations, so it'll bring up locations of grocery stores, liquor stores. That has to do with public health impacts. Water and sewer management areas. Transportation is going to turn on all the road names. It's going to show you the bus stops, the bike racks, cat bus routes, sidewalks, railroads, trails, the ground and surface water data I'm going to turn on, because that will let you know if there are any impaired streams or impaired lakes or contaminants near there. And it'll let you know the groundwater recharge rate of that parcel as well, so quite dynamic. I'm going to turn on Pollution Sources. And again, it'll tell you if any of these national or state pollution sources are located nearby. I'm going to turn on Land Management Data, which is all about anything else, you know, wellhead protection areas, conservation areas. That gets back to the Greening Mid-Michigan data we created. So you'll have habitat areas identified, soil types, farmland suitability. Then there's floodplain data, and then, of course, the parcel data. As you can see, it would be just as if the city had its own GIS department, is what you're seeing here. So I like to turn all of that on before I start my assessment. And then what I do is, I'll go up to the HIA Questionnaire tab. And, oh, no, 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 Drawing Tool, I apologize. We're going to draw our project boundary. And so, I think I lost my parcel there. There we go. I need to go up to, one second. There we go. When you click on the Data Layer tab, make sure your Transparency Slider, which can you see that I'm sliding it. If it's over to the left, everything is opaque, and as you move it to the right, your parcel data starts to bleed through again. Make sure that it's all transparent in a way that lets you see all the data layers. And the most fun thing to play with when you are involved in planning are the aerials. And so I'm going to turn on the aerials. And so there you can see, if I were to click Identify, it'll have a little question mark pop up next to the mouse, and I can click on any parcel, and it'll tell me all sorts of things about the data layers we brought up. It's one-stop shopping for parcel data. Okay. Now, what I'm going to do is zoom back into City Hall. Ah, see, there it is. I'm on my Drawing Tool. Oh, stop. Okay. Draw Project Boundary. Click to start drawing. And what I need to do first is to drag this, and you can drag this all around like this to center your property you're looking at. Click Draw Project Boundary. Click on the corner. And it should, I'm going to clear this. Clear. Okay. Now it's coming around and letting me kind of draw a boundary. And you can make it as messy or as tidy as you want with practice. So there we have our boundary drawn. Okay, let's start over. Follow the parcel line. What I didn't do was double-click to complete. There we go. There we go. Excellent. So now we will go up to the HIA Questionnaire. And so these are all the topics that have to do with health, with public health, when you're doing a site plan review. Water quality, wastewater, air quality, waste disposal, noise, the social capital surrounding it, so the community surrounding it. Physical activity and injury prevention, so how walkable is this? How safe is it? The parcel and what's proposed. And then there's a tab called Health Equity and Food Systems. And so it's able to give you some information and ask questions about social equity and health equity. Growth objectives, and that comes back to our Regional Growth Project of '05, or is it meeting any sustainability goals? And then here's a tab Ecological Value. Just for instance, let's go to the questions having to do with ecological value of that parcel. So thinking in terms of if someone were to propose a development on this site of City Hall, you have some questions here. Is the project likely to adversely affect a state or federally protected species of wildlife or vegetation? So let's click on that. Then you get a small menu. If you go to the "I" for Information here, it defines what this question is all about. And that goes for all of these tabs over here having to do with public health. You'll always have that "I" tab, that Information tab. You might want to read more about it before you start answering these. So by Protection of Potential Habitat, it says here, they mean for endangered, threatened, or special concern species or ecologically sensitive natural areas. And then it goes on to tell you which data layers, under the Data Layer tab over here, you should pull up to help you answer that question.
Your screen went off.
Oh.
Okay.
Is it?
Sorry, I saw you always move just when the screen would come back. I thought it was something that was going blank on your computer rather than...
No, I haven't had any trouble up here. More helpful to see it, though, instead of me going on and on. Is it going to come back up? Oh, good. Thank you. Yep, that's it. So for instance, this tab tells you the Data Layers folder provides maps about project location that can help you answer the question. You might want to look in the Land Management folder or contact your community planning department for info. So, David, of course, there's always the fallback. So this information part of the menu is helpful when you click through the whole questionnaire, because it'll tell you, if you can't answer yes or no to whether or not this project adversely affects the environment, then you can look to different data that we have in the Data Layer tab to help you answer that. So it's, again, the one-stop shopping. For instance, if you're interested in noise, is the project likely to generate noises that will create a nuisance to neighboring uses? So we click on that. And then the Information tab tells you that, it gives you some decibel information about what is an acceptable decibel level and what is not. It kind of guides you along with whether or not you answer yes or no to that question. Some other Health Impact questions, wastewater, are the soils appropriate to support a septic system? If you don't know yes or no, you can read the Information tab, and it will give you a little bit more information about where to find the soils under the Land Management tab. And so you'd be able to do an assessment of the soil type and whether or not it would be able to perk or not. And so, you know, we have all of these other tabs that, you know, physical activity and injury prevention, does the project connect to a trail system for walking or biking? Then the Information tab tells you where to go to pull up trail maps. It would pop up on here. And then, if you go over here to the far right, the Measurement Tool allows you to measure distances between transit stops and schools, or transit stops on the City Hall, and things like that. You have a very basic measurement tool. Click, drag, double-click, and then it gives you a measurement in feet between objects. So I think in April, we are going to have this redone, so that you don't have to do a lot of the measuring, that it will come up for you. If you click on a parcel, it'll already tell you, this is 150 feet to a bus stop. We're working on that right now, because this will always be a work in progress to make it easier. So that's an example of, you know, being able to measure. Down here, Generate Report. If you do the login and you have your own account, you can click Generate Report. You can print a map, so it creates PDFs of what you've created. It'll print out all of the questions that you've answered and the meaning behind them. And then finally, we have About the Tool, and just explaining that the tool was created with the partnership of Tri-County and the Ingham County Health Department and MSU. Those three entities created this and brought on the grant funding to create it. So I'm taking it around the region to let planning commissions and planning departments know that this is available for them. All of the data layers on it are up to date. It is free to use, and you can use it as you wish for site plan reviews. And I'm always a resource to call or email if you're doing a site plan review and you come into some bumps or something and you have questions. I can even come to the office or to the meeting and help, so. With that, I can take any questions I might have.
Commissioners, any questions? Yes, Commissioner Fisher?
Thanks, Harmony. Harmony is also a great Girl Scout troop leader. She's the leader of my daughter's Girl Scout troop. So, good information. Thanks for the presentation. I'm still struggling a little bit with how exactly we would use this as a planning commission. Can you speak a little bit more about that, or maybe David can?
Sure. Yeah. As a planning commission, you rely on staff to review site plans and that sort of work, if I'm not wrong. And so this would be a tool that David would be able to use whenever you would get a proposal that had to do with any parcel. It could be a special use permit, it could be just a general site plan by right, and any type of land proposal that came through, David could use this to analyze that parcel. You don't, and the level to which you use it is really up to you. I think it's really helpful to have to just pull up the aerials sometimes and take a look at the lay of the land, depending on maybe questions that David might get over the phone about parcels, things like that. When I was working as a local planner, we had our own GIS system. We had to pay for the licensing and the training to be able to use it, which was this, essentially, this tool. And this cut out that cost and allows the city to do its own mapping and analysis. And so if there was a specific question on a parcel about floodplains or ecological value, or like anything we went through, David would have this at his fingertips to create a report about, or at least just jot down notes, like, I know this about this parcel now, this is of interest to us. It could be informal like that, it could be more formal, and you could complete an entire site plan review with it.
Thank you. Ms. Colburn?
Harmony, so that we can, as soon as possible, start helping to, you know, because any map is only as good as it's maintained. As an example, our DDA is contemplating adding some bicycle racks. What mechanism do you want us to communicate that once we complete it, assuming that we do, to you, so that that's added into the system?
That would be an email to me, and then we would add that to our database at Tri-County to update that database. And I have, Tri-County has two GIS technicians that work to update databases all the time based on what's happening in the region. And so it would just become a part of that. So you would just contact me, and you would send that map or that database to me of where those locations are.
Or something of that nature?
No, it can be as simple as a dot drawn on a street map. We'd be able to update that. It can be very simple, or it could be GPS.
I like the idea of simple.
That's always my go-to. To answer Commissioner Fisher's question earlier, too, about how we might be able to use this tool, I see this more as kind of an informal tool, you know, in the background when a development review comes in, to kind of use it in the sense that, kind of informing us, helping me maybe see something that I've missed or didn't think about proximity to things is a good example. Like, I didn't know there was a bus stop, you know, two blocks away, or whatever, those kinds of things. Floodplain Map Overlay is another really good tool to use, since the physical maps that we've been provided from FEMA are pretty inadequate in terms of understanding the relationship of the flood zone to an actual parcel. So things like that would be very helpful. I think if we used it in a formal setting, it might be confusing to us and possibly the public about whose standard applies here. Is this a standard of the tool, like, you know, decibel levels and things like that? Is this a standard we're measuring to take action on? Or I don't want to confuse those issues with what's required in our zoning ordinance. So probably an intake tool to help uncover any conflicts or issues related to a development site might be more beneficial than bringing this at this level. That's how I see it right now. Certainly, it could evolve into kind of trying to merge the two at some point. Could be useful. But maybe even generating maps for the staff reports and things like that might be useful, too.
Yes, Commissioner Brown?
Does the system have information about our zoning or not? So is it going to show?
No, it has generalized zoning on it. There's a generalized zoning map on here, if you were to click that on. Tri-County routinely, every so often, gathers everyone's zoning maps across the region and puts them into generalized classifications. So that's okay for a macro view of the region, but for the City of Mason zoning, that is something we could add to the database. We could add your particular zoning map to it. In the future, if you were to start using this routinely, we'd be able to incorporate your local needs into the tool. So this is a brand-new tool, I mean, brand-new. And so we're just getting the word out to use it, and so those very intricate local needs are coming in the future. As the people, as the communities who use it get back in touch with us and share data with us, we can put into it.
I had another thought, which was, this would be really useful when we were considering the, I forget what we're calling it, but the Cedar Street area we were talking about, there was a subcommittee, you know what I'm talking about? The subcommittee that was going to get together and plan land uses for that. I mean, that would be a great tool for that committee to use to just explore what's going on in that particular area. So I think it'll be really useful.
Mr., does anybody else have a question or comment? Here, Pro Tem Brown.
Thank you, Harmony, for coming tonight. And I, in grad school, actually had opportunities to play around with ArcView and ESRI and ArcGIS and all of that exciting stuff. So when you started pulling out layers, I immediately got excited. But I wanted to ask specifically on the layering, does the user have an ability to create additional layers on their own, or is that something that just Tri-County can do?
Just Tri-County. That's the difference between using a Tri-County database that's already created or paying for your own GIS license and system. That would be the difference. So as you go through reviews and you start using this, I'm sure gaps in the data will start popping up. And just, it's as easy as an email to me to let me know what that data gap is. And again, we can work with you to insert that data into here, if you have it. We would need additional grant money and funding to create a database for you. It'd have to be something you had somewhere that we could put in here, make it fit. So, yeah, you can't add to it. That is the one drawback.
Well, I want to thank you for, Tri-County just making this available. ESRI software is extremely expensive, but it can be very useful. And when I first started with the Planning Commission, I think one of the first questions I asked Dave is, do we have ArcView? And he said, no.
On your sad face?
So I think this has the potential to be an enormous resource, not only for us, but, you know, potential developers and others that look to start projects in the city. So thank you, and I look forward to us working with you to even expand the capabilities of the software.
That's good to hear. Thank you very much. I'm definitely looking for that.
David, go ahead.
I have one more quick question. Can you do buffering, like, for a particular parcel? Like, do... Like, do distance for notifications and things like that? When you started talking about GIS, I was like, ooh.
To create a buffer around it.
Include it in that buffer. Remember the days of notification in GIS?
I do. I'm trying to think if it would be, you would draw, there might be kind of our own way to do that. I'll have to ask Mike Thomas at MSU if there's some hidden way to do that. I'll do that tomorrow. But in the meantime, tonight, I could say, to play with this, I would try to draw around, I'd draw a boundary around the parcel, and then I would use the measuring tool to measure out 50 feet and see if I could draw another line and see if that stuck, if you wanted to mess around with that tonight. Otherwise, I'll have a concrete answer for you tomorrow when I call MSU. Good question. That's really helpful, buffers. That's what planning's all about, almost. Okay. Oh, good point. Thank you. I'll email you tomorrow.
Great. Harmony, thank you very much for your time this evening. It looks like it's going to be a great resource.
Good, good.
You know, it already looks cool, it's iPad-friendly, and so that's a big plus. We've been looking at it while we were watching yours, and yeah, it's very neat.
Glad to hear that. Well, we're thankful, the Health Department acquired a large grant from the Pew Charitable Trust and the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation, and they funded this. And we, Tri-County matched a little bit of funding to do it too, in my time, so we're thankful for that, or else we wouldn't have this at all. And it's going to be great for communities who don't have GIS, and that's the majority of communities in our three counties. So we're glad to, what is it, democra, what is it, democratization of data. Make it free and easy for everyone to use.
Well, it looks like it was money well spent, so.
Oh, good to hear. Well, thank you. Good to see you all.
All right, Commissioners. Next topic on our agenda is our regular business, a report from the Medical Marijuana Ordinance Subcommittee to give us an update on the activity from the end of February meeting. David, do you have the notes on that, or is there a spokesperson?
Looking at me, so I guess I met.
It's normal, they looked at you first, everybody just followed the gaze.
Yeah, so the Medical Marijuana Ordinance Committee met on February 28th to begin the process of creating the draft language for an ordinance to address both the council, planning commission, and community concerns related to this issue. So in meeting, we basically developed a very brief list of the things that kind of came up during that meeting. And these are kind of both in correlation and in addition to the list of issues identified during the joint meeting between the Planning Commission and the Council last month. And basically, the things that came up were protecting building and occupant safety, being mindful of potential incompatible land uses, consider requiring caregiver registration, gathering input, community concerns, crafting ordinance language consistent with master plan principles, considering neighborhood values, being aware of the potential for related crime activity. It encompasses a lot of the overarching issues that we've identified at other times. This will be added, basically, to that master list. And we kind of agree that the next step really should be to start gathering public input. We really need to get out there, get the input as early as possible so that we don't get ahead of what our community may want to see as well, try to blend those interests. And the model for that would basically be kind of threefold. First, it would be educating the public on what we know about this issue so far. We know what the current law requires, we know what case law has sorted out, and we know what some of the legal opinions are out there. And any pending case law could be added to that so that they have a base to work from as well. And from that, then we roll out kind of the leading issues that we're already going to be working on, and then get their opinions and attitudes and suggestions about how to deal with some of those issues. So that's kind of the format that we're looking at to pursue. The next step is to identify the key players, the groups and service organizations and others to approach and include in the dialogue in how to reach them. So basically, we're there. The committee wanted copies of the, I left them up in my office, just remembered, darn it, the previous copies of the planning and zoning news that deal with this issue. So before you leave, I want to grab those and bring them back down to the committee members. So that's basically where we're at. I just wanted to lay that out, let you know what we've been working on, where we're headed.
Great, thank you.
If there are any other committee members here that want to add to it?
Commissioners that are in that committee have anything to add? All right. And going along with that same, you know, with part of our meeting the last month when the council was with us, one other thing that was suggested was, you know, working with our, not just our neighbors here in Mason, inside the state limits, but also the outlying communities. And Mr. Colburn was in a meeting just recently on some other topics and was able to meet with two of the townships. And Mr. Colburn, if you would mind sharing with us a little bit about how that discussion went and the openness, I think it goes right along with what our subcommittee is working on, and that maybe from what Marty has to say, we might be able to find some synergy in a couple of our committee members joining in. And without stealing the thunder, Marty, if you want to go ahead and share with us.
Surely, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had the opportunity to meet with the township supervisors of Vivae and Aurelius. Specifically, we meet every year in regard to the fire contracts, but there are other issues that we address as well. And in this particular case, we discussed the medical marijuana. As you recall, I believe it was Councilmember Mulvaney had brought up, but there was also further discussed by both council members and planning commissioners at that meeting, the concern of unintended consequences of possibly just moving a problem down the road. And if there's not ordinances or at least some common understanding between the neighbors of the different governing bodies of what is allowed or not allowed, that we could run into conflict with our neighbors. So I took that opportunity to have that discussion with the two township supervisors, and they concurred that that was of an interest of theirs. And they also agreed that they thought that a good place to have this start was respectfully an ad hoc committee or a subcommittee of some sort with representatives of their planning commissions and the City of Mason's planning commission to get that dialogue started. They very much understood, particularly with Vivae, because of the adjacent governing, you know, municipal boundaries, that truly the kicking the problem down the street could become an issue either direction. And so it's best to at least sit down and talk that through together. So I think we're poised to be able to try to pull that together when all three parties are ready, and I know that we can work with staff, legal counsel, and of course, representatives from all three communities to move that discussion forward. I guess at that point, I'll be providing a similar report to the city council and then look at timing in regard to when the bodies can get together and speak.
Thank you, Mr. Colburn. Commissioners, any comments on that, as far as, you know, it kind of goes hand-in-hand with what the discussion was on knowing what our neighbors are looking at. And I think it was great that timing worked out well, and depending on when they are ready, maybe we could look at a couple of, maybe not the full subcommittee, but a couple members of that subcommittee that could meet, you know, kind of more on a casual basis to try to do, you know, some of that information gathering that was just part of your report that was just given. So we'll kind of wait to hear back and go far with that. And David, you'll probably be able to keep us informed as well, so. Yes, Commissioner Varnum?
One of the things that we talked about at the subcommittee was having, putting together a document that really talks about what, you know, what our options are, you know, what do we know, and what, you know, what are the choices that we have? And then, you know, what are the potential, what would be the potential choices if the law were to change? And so I'm thinking if that, when that document is ready, that would be something that would be a great, something that we could share with them and get their feedback on as well.
Absolutely.
Because at this point, we've, you know, we've met, we've talked, we've talked, and we've talked. And so, but we need to have something to, you know, to sort of go off of. And so I think that's kind of the next step. And then we talked about planning the community input sessions, and we always knew that it wouldn't be just people from Mason, because you can't really exclude anyone from elsewhere. So that's something that we'd want to probably coordinate with them as well, potentially. I mean, I don't know that we'd want to have a, come if you're from any of these communities kind of thing, but if they wanted to have a community input session in their community, we could share the materials that we developed for ours.
Well, and I want to commend you too on, you know, the discussion of getting that document put together, knowing what we know and that information, because, you know, again, you know, looking back the last time this all was addressed, there was a lot of confusion, not just between what we knew between council and the commission, but also on the, just the general of looking, there was some miscommunication on thinking we could change the overall law. And, you know, we can't change that part, so it was still within the guidelines of where caregivers can really be. And, you know, I just think that you're on the right track of looking at getting that document ready first, so then that way, everybody's got that in hand first to know where they're going with. So kudos to you on that part of it, so. If anybody else has anything to add, I'd also like to have Mayor Pro Tem Brown share a little bit about some information that he was able to pick up from yesterday that, you know, as, again, as we've been talking, this has been a moving target. Well, the federal government is looking at it again, and, you know, Commissioner Brown, or Mayor Pro Tem Brown stays on top of this, you know, through his job, and sees a lot of it. If you haven't noticed already, you know, Marlin is, he's very interested in the things that affect Mason. And he does have, he's a great resource on that type of information. So if you wanted to share anything, Mayor Pro Tem Brown, on, you know, the two articles that you did find, and if you heard anything new today as the articles relate to today, so.
Definitely. I will forward the articles that I shared with City Administrator Colburn and Chairman Reeser, basically two Washington Post articles outlining a plan, a bill that was introduced in the United States Senate today by Senators Rand Paul, Senators Cory Booker, and Kristin Jildebrand, three senators introducing legislation to change some of the federal policy related to medical marijuana. I have not a chance to go through the legislation completely on my own, but the articles kind of give a summary of some of the policy changes that they are proposing in allowing the states to better regulate the use of medicinal marijuana. And so just as our state landscape for dealing with this particular policy issue is changing, the federal landscape is changing as well. You may recall that at the last meeting that we had in February, the chief had indicated that currently the federal government is not enforcing federal law in states that have passed a state law allowing the use of marijuana for medicinal or recreational purposes, but that could change with a new federal administration. And so the impetus by this group of senators is to actually change the federal law so that the enforcement cannot simply be changed from one administration to the next, but the law is actually currently in place, or would be in place, to allow states the adequate protection to pursue these policies or to pursue the use of marijuana for a variety of ways. So I will be sure to pass along that article just for your perusal, and if I hear anything on it more, I'll certainly share with the commission and with the committee members and our chair and city administrator as well. And I'm not sure if I forward it to David or not, but I'll forward it as well. If nothing more, it's interesting reading.
Thank you. Any other comments, Commissioners? Moving right along then. Unfinished business. Commissioners, any unfinished business? Unfinished business? New business? Yes, Commissioner Haywood?
Mr. Chair, by day, I disguise myself as a planner. Mostly in the field of transit and transportation. But through that opportunity, I am a member of the American Planning Association, and I get the chapter newsletters. This month, the Michigan Planner is dedicated to elected and appointed officials. And I contacted them and was able to get copies of the issue for everyone here tonight. And also to let you know that, as planning commissioners, you are eligible for membership if you are interested. So if that's okay, I'd like to, I'll pass these out at the end of the meeting. I'll have these available.
Terrific, thank you. Any other new business? Correspondence. You've got the planning and zoning news from January waiting for us today at our desks. Any other correspondence? Liaison reports. Mayor Pro Tem Brown, you've got 25 seconds.
Uh-oh.
Can I tell us what's going on?
The council met and we voted, and that's about it.
Okay. Thanks, David.
Just a few things. We actually have had some abbreviated meetings throughout the month of February and March. We were made aware of a new hire within city staff. Mr. Tom Sillsby was introduced to the council as our new superintendent of Public Works in charge of streets and water. We also had a council work session to continue our discussion and goals and objectives. This is something that the council wanted to take a serious look at this year so that it could inform not only our policymaking process, but also our budgetary decisions that are coming up in the next couple of months. And so we're working on identifying and prioritizing some goals, not only in the one-to-two-year interim, but looking at some long-term goals as well. At our last council meeting, the council also approved motions for street closures for both the Sun Dried Music Festival, which is the last weekend in August, and also the Mason State Bank 5K race, which is the first Friday in May. We passed Resolution 2015-12, which authorized the release of funds for local street construction. You'll see a lot of burrows in the city this year. It was actually a $1.5 million contract that was approved with Reeve Riley Construction. And the streets that will be worked on this year are East Maple between Rogers and Temple Streets, Washington Street between East Ash and East Maple Streets, South Lansing Street between West Maple and West Ash Streets, and a street repair at 433 West Cherry Street. Finally, the council has had some interesting discussion at our February meeting. Mr. Haywood gave a presentation about the Riverwalk Pedestrian Bridge and Trailhead Sign Project, and there was an article in the community news giving an update to the community about that, and things will begin to progress this spring, and we're excited about that project. We also had an update from Mr. Haywood on the boiler system at the library, and I won't steal his thunder on that in case he had prepared to discuss it this evening, but suffice it to say, there were some issues that have been resolved, and we're grateful to him and to city staff and to the library staff for their patience and their willingness to work through what was a little bit of an inconvenient situation. I do want to share, outside of city council business, I do want to share with the planning commission an article that was published on a national blog called Smart Growth America. They are a national nonprofit organization that advocates for smart growth practices and community planning, and they have a local leaders council that invites elected officials to be a part of advocating for some of these principles in local governance. And so as a member of the council, the leadership of Smart Growth America asked if I would be willing to participate in an interview about some of the things that we're doing in Mason, and I readily agreed because it gave an opportunity to really put Mason on a national stage. And the reason I bring this up tonight at our meeting is that they highlighted our master plan update process and actually included a link to the master plan on this website, and talked about some of the principles that we are embracing in our master plan update. So I thought that that was very exciting to be included, and all of you have contributed greatly to the master plan update, and I wanted to thank you for that and also show how your work translates into further publicizing of things that we're trying to do here in Mason. In addition to that, we talked about in the article, the In addition to that, we talked about in the article, the development at 124 and 140 Ash, something that all aspects of city government, planning commission, historic district commission, city council have been very involved in, so thank you for your work on that, and also the Brownfield redevelopment plan that we have for the Dart Bank headquarters. So, all of these are exciting projects that are going on in Mason right now, and I was grateful for the opportunity to really talk about them with this particular group. And feel free to check out the Smart Growth America website if you get an opportunity. They do a lot of good work and provide a lot of good resources to communities. And with that, I also just want to say thanks to everyone who attended and came out to the 150 ceremony yesterday, and all of those that really just put the shoulder to the wheel and helped to get things done wherever they needed. There were too many people that helped out to name, but I'm so grateful for everyone and the roles that were played. With that, that concludes my liaison report. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Commissioners, any questions for Mayor Pro Tem Brown? Thank you, Marlon. All right, Mr. Colburn, what do you have to tell us this evening? Hopefully, all good news.
Oh, of course.
Spring is coming, right?
Yes, well, it has been very busy for the DPW. They've not had as many water breaks this year, although we've had a handful, but we still have a lot of water leads that are freezing because we had such intense colds. So hopefully, as it warms up, that'll start thawing some of those out. They've been thawing out most of them, there's a handful that still are frozen, and hopefully this will help out a little bit. Just to follow up into the streets, as Mayor Pro Tem Brown referenced, the local streets program, we also have a couple of federal grants coming down the line, and the South Cedar Street project doesn't start till after 4th of July, but that will be through the federal dollars and a federal grant that we're working on, as well as another one for the box lights down off of Kip and Jefferson Street, and Kip and South Cedar. And so, those are different sources of funding and timing, but it also kind of coincides with the Ingham County Kip Road Project, which goes from US 127 all the way to Dexter Trail. So it really is going to be orange barrel season in Mason this year, but that's a good thing, because that continues to show our efforts in terms of keeping our streets improved and safe. That being said, one of the bigger things coming up in the immediate future is the election on transportation funding, which is the election the first week of May, and so we'll continue to discuss that matter in terms of policy, both within the city and the state, and how to accomplish the goals to include safe streets. Trails, we've been talking about trails and working with Ingham County and the millage. As you know, there's a half mill that's been acquired, and over the next six years, there's about $20 million that'll be directed towards those trails, and we've been following and tracking that. But we're going into the next phase of a study, working with nonprofits, and that is to fund the preliminary engineering for the route between Holt and Mason. The first phase is completed, and that was in terms of trying to identify routes. They looked at five different options and have established a priority list on that. So we're excited about that. Realistically, I see the year 2015, that Ingham County with the collective minds of everybody interested, to do a lot of planning in 2015, and then start constructing in 2016 and on. 124 and 140, East Ash Street and the development, got a walkthrough on that, David and I went through to just kind of get a catch-up. You can see the windows going in on the front, that's exciting. On the inside, they've done a lot of framing, they're working on plumbing, electrical, and it's my understanding now they're going to be doing the roof tear-off and working on that as well. So they're about 40% done with the project, and moving forward, they hope to be substantially done by July 4th. Vault Deli is the next one in line in terms of getting their ducks in a row for doing some upstairs lofts. They're looking at two single-bedroom and two-bedroom lofts, total of four, and we're just working with them in terms of getting some of the finalization of performance and such, but otherwise, we're getting the verbal green light from the state, and hopefully by April, I'll be able to bring it to the city council to move forward with those improvements as well. Just to highlight a couple of items, and Mayor Pro Tem may want to take a look at any other items, but I brought up the bike racks intentionally because that is an issue that the DDA is looking at in terms of downtown. They're studying and looking at adding where to add them, but I think realistically, they want to add some nice new bike racks, but they want to go with a little bit of a twist of some, I'll call it art, that is linked to the bike racks. And then also, we're working with consumers to look at the feasibility and the cost of what it would cost to lay some of the, at least a block or two of the electrical lines underground, and so we're having discussions with them on that as well. As you're aware, the council has approved somewhat of an emergency expenditure for this year. Along that alleyway of the 100 West Block, right where the project is going, we'd identified that the storm drain has collapsed, and there's some weaknesses within the sanitary line, so we're going to have to tear that all up once the snow and frost is out of the ground and replace that this year. That was not a planned event, but a reality that we have to address, and so since that alleyway is going to be opened up, we're looking at hopefully what the costs are of trying to lay the electrical in at the same time. So we'll continue to pursue that. But it was an interesting DDA and a very engaged DDA that I really enjoy working with them, and I don't know if the Mayor Pro Tem wants to, oh, no, I'm sorry, that's the mayor, I apologize. This is the committee you're on, the mayor's on that one. Get all the right seats in the right place, but it's a very active DDA. They're talking about the upcoming budget and some of the opportunities that will be had in terms of repairs to parking lots and to other infrastructure as well. So it's a great group to work with. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Colburn. Any comments, Mr. Colburn? All right, David, we're not skipping you tonight. We'll let you finish on a high note on, tell us a little bit about what's going on with your group, as well as for the same additional highlights on what, you know, Harmony had to share, and, you know, what kind of tool that's going to be for you.
Great, well, thank you. With regard to the Health Impact Mapper Tool, I haven't had a whole lot of time to use it or put much thought to it, but I do like its potential for helping us identify any other concerns related to issues that either we don't have a lot of experience in working with or may not have thought of. A lot of these outside resources can really tip us off any potentially sensitive issues on a site, so I really appreciate any extra guidance that I can have in my area, so every little bit helps from that regard, so we'll take a look at it and see how much it can help us. So, some of the projects that are going on that you're probably aware of, Dart Bank facilities, they're continuing to move forward, doing a lot of their preliminary engineering, architectural work, that kind of thing. They have submitted for administrative site plan review, which I have completed, and I've returned my responses to them about ways that they can either improve or have done a good job with their proposed site plan. So they have that in their hands and are beginning to work on that process of polishing it off for our meeting. I believe they will be ready in time for the April meeting, but I'm not sure. We'll see when they submit everything and how thorough it is, but I think they're shooting for the April 14th meeting. They've also applied for rezoning of about a third of the westerly portion of the site adjacent to the railroad right-of-way from, I believe, Office to C1, which is our central business district zoning, and that will be on the April 14th agenda, and there'll be a public hearing for that at that time. Just to touch on a couple of the items that I gave a report to the city council about that Mayor Pro Tem Brown commented on, the library boiler, which has been an issue for the past couple of weeks that I've been working on. We did have to close the library for about a week due to the boiler emitting carbon monoxide at pretty significantly dangerous levels, particularly in the boiler room, so that was a pretty serious matter that we had to take quick action on. It took a while to get the proper assessment of the equipment, but apparently it needed a thorough cleaning. That was done. The boiler's been serviced and certified and back into operation, so the library's back at normal functioning capacity. So, however, they did, the experts in the field did caution us that the boiler's about 55 years old, and they don't get much older. So, we had already been fairly proactive on this issue, we just, it kind of moved up its maintenance schedule a little quicker than we had anticipated. We had it on our capital improvement plan for the last year or two, and it was actually in our, in my proposed budget in early February, so it kind of beat us to the punch, if you will, so. But we're going to move forward with that and take a serious look at its replacement next year, so. With regard to the pedestrian bridge on Jefferson Street that spans the sycamore just in front of the cemetery offices, that bridge, the specifications have been approved by the Department of Natural Resources, so it's basically the green light to move forward and build it. So we have crossed all of our Ts and dotted all of our Is, and so now we're on the pursuit of bidders to give us some prices, and then we can move forward with that component and get it built. So we'll look forward to that in the next few months, and we'll report out how that process goes. Last, I just want to make an announcement about the community garden. We are approaching this next season for community gardening, and we have basically two open application periods, one for returning gardeners, and that's from March 16th to March 31st, and then for any new gardeners, if there are any plots that weren't spoken for, we have a open application period from April 1st to April 15th for any new gardeners that might be interested. So if you're interested, please get your application in during those times. We're going to have a kickoff meeting April 23rd, actually, April 30th, pardon me, April 30th, and opening day is May 16th. If you have any more details, you can feel free to give me a buzz if you need them. And other than that, that's what I have for my report. Thank you.
Great, David, thank you. Commissioners, any comments or questions for Mr. Haywood? Thank you. Well, commissioners, thank you for your time, your dedication to the city. We're approved for tonight. Turned. Approved. Must be one of those nights.
Ed Reeser, I approve this meeting.
Yeah, I approve this message. Messed up Harmony's name, skipped.